This conference will now be recorded.
Everybody got real quiet.
Did I say we were recording? Everybody shut up?
Yes.
One minute. So, James is gonna get updated every year now.
You mean aerials?
Yeah.
Really?
They passed it today.
Oh, did they?
Basically, get aerials every year.
Are they gonna fly the topo?
They're gonna do both the types of imaging. It's a four-five.
Oh, the only, yeah. Every year, but they're not gonna update the light or.
It's every six or eight years.
TM every year.
Be good.
All right, I have seven o'clock. All right. It is seven o'clock. I would like to call the November 5th City Council meeting to order. Start with roll call, please.
Daniels.
Here.
Hannah Michael.
Here.
Lane.
Here.
Murdock.
Here.
And Councilmember Ritter is absent this evening, Mayor.
Okay. For those of you in attendance, please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our.
All right. Our first item tonight is our consent agenda. We have the minutes from our council meeting on October 15th. The pay ordinance 889 and the facility use agreement with the Johnson County Senior Center.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? During that, roll call, please.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Thank you. Council motion carried.
You wanna make a motion to amend the agenda now?
Yeah, I can do that. I'd just sort of like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move under new business item 4G to the top of the order. Make it or pre-A or whatever you want.
Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion about the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Close? Okay. Item two is called a public. Members of the public that wish to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business are invited to do so. Do either of you wish to address the council outside your agenda item? Okay. Item three is old business. We have none, so we'll go to item four. G. Rotary.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Normally, we put these temporary increments on the senate chip, however, based upon the situation when compared to at least something important enough that we should be able to weigh in on this application whether or not. It's gonna be obviously a very visible event and something that might draw some questions from the public line. Today, councilor allows something to happen based on, well, if we're going through 2020, a truly pretty standard temporary use, permanent applications, submitted by the Rotary, of it will close on downtown area and a couple of children and a couple of beds for kids to have some fun, which in some sense is a good thing. If it's been so cooped up for so long, it'd be nice to be able to have some outdoor entertainment and do some things. However, in light of all that, I didn't see any addressing or talking about of the counties and states procedures would be followed. So, I thought it was a best end of the applicants, does anybody come in and talk to you about what their plans were for the for compliance with state laws. So, with that, I've just put it directly in a recommendation for approval based upon Paul Johnson County and state emphasis procedures for COVID-19 transition by the governor and for county commissioners. So, with that, if you'd like to add to your, add to my second.
Bob Denler, 3318 West Night District, so, I suppose. Yeah, it's kind of blind in the face of the lockdown in the way. But it's outside. Number one. Need, you know, the outside. We're going to advertise mask-wearing please signs on each end of the one block. The whiteboard that we were gonna put up for keeping track of the practice, the idea is to have, we've got four courts laid out there, you saw it. Play and have a double elimination tournament. And the signage, the whiteboard that'll have that, I don't know, will have signs to also, you know, encourage mask-wearing and social distance. We have all the handouts and any information that goes out to the team participants or anybody who comes down, there's will have same rotations on early mask-wearing and social distance. Again, it's outside. We thought that was the best, best way to answer. We haven't done anything in a long year. Most everybody's the same vote. We thought we might try to sneak this in before the end of the year, see if we could get it done. So, that was our idea.
Any questions for Bob or Brad from council?
We realized that the governor, you know, I think on the 15th is gonna update her stipulations or whatever, or heating spring on high there, so I don't know. You know, and Johnson County's been pretty well sticking with that, so, you know, it's all gonna be subject to that, of course. Comes down, it's gonna be, you know, no events, or then it'll be canceled. We certainly won't fly in the face of whatever.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have any questions here or anything?
Lori?
Well, you know, obviously, I'm a rotarian, so I don't really have questions, just comments that we were just trying to get an event done. We're very cautious about what we are doing and what we're not doing. So, we filled out a cornhole tournament outside, pretty much spread out. We'll figure out, the players will wear masks, we'll figure out how we're gonna handle that as far as standing up to the cornhole and being near your opponent. We'll, we'll make sure everything is good on that as far as rules go. You know, just, I think another bigger thing apart this is that we're doing it downtown instead of doing it at the barn, mainly because we wanted to take this opportunity for helping out the downtown businesses and just kind of showcase them. So, we figured if we're down there, then more people will be down there to go shop in their little shops and look around, which are open anyway. They will set limits on how many people they can have in their door at one time. We're not managing any of that. It's right there by the tire station, so, you know, they can kind of showcase some of their events, you know, what they have going on down there. So, the businesses, restaurants down there, hopefully, will get a little extra Saturday business from it. So, it was more meant to be, you know, yes, a way for a community coming together, but I don't expect that some people's at this event, you know. It'll be kind of, most people will kind of come and go, it's not gonna be, everybody's gonna hang out for a long time. Except for those that are playing in the tournament, you know, those would be just groups of two hundred people in there, so. That's just a little extra info, and I won't say anymore.
The only thing I might offer, if you could get like another, spread your game play out just a little bit more, like another five feet, so that if you, if the guy stood out away from the other thrower, that you could always have that separation between each.
Sure, Karen.
Each participant waiting to throw, you know.
We've got whole lots.
Right, and we have room, so that's like, yeah, I think that would encourage or help to promote the distancing. And might promote or allow for a few spectators to safely watch if they chose to
Yeah.
watch the exciting
Playoffs.
Cornhole.
Boards are white, I just ordered, the bags are red and blue, so we've got red, white, and blue. I talked, Lynn and I went and talked to Rod KJ's, you know, because it'd be right from his place, he's got dry load customer. So, we wanted to touch base with insurers. And he understands, he says, it's great. He said, that's not my peak kind of business anymore. I said, well, maybe we'll sell you some pieces. He said, yeah, and you'll do some party cuts and stuff with these people out there, and it makes some peace and work. He did real well at his orientation.
Right.
We talked to Perkies, and they're on board, and I went over and talked to Chuck Prasinski in the dance off, about you just parking lot, and he's in, so. We've got some other businesses there we have to talk to. Yeah, we will.
Okay. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the temporary use permit. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions about the motion? Roll call, please.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Thank you. Council motion carried.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you very much. I had one question.
Certainly.
I should have mentioned it. Of course, we would like the streets department to drop off the block eight, there are some, you know, there are areas that they
We have to do that.
closes pretty. Well, how can we get those down there? That's why I asked.
Just gave him on the Friday for?
Uh, yeah, if they were down there Friday evening or something.
Yes.
That guy's gonna want to work Saturday for sure. And if they can get him in the tree along there or something by the Great American Bank, or
Okay.
we'll get him out of the block of the street.
I'll let Ron Creason know.
And that's where we were gonna fix our mask-wearing sign, so.
Okay.
So, we can see him on the street.
No problem.
At the event. All right, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Or A, consider, consider addendum to roundabout design contract to include access drive scope.
Yes, Council, a little regal in this. I'm sure you'll remember in October, we were discussing the project, and we had the owner of your 30 come up and express some reservations about signage, directional signage, once the roundabout goes in to direct traffic back to the, to the strip mall. During that discussion, we indicated to him that we will include in the roundabout project some directional signage that would help people as they turn west along that first to understand that they need to go to this western access drive to get down to, to the strip mall, because because the eastern access drive will be a out-only after the, after the roundabouts constructed. So, we'd always intended to put that waypoint assignment, but when we were discussing that, the idea came up about this western access drive, that it should probably be a public street. So, I had a thinness workup, a scope and fee to do the design work on that. They'll have some survey, and we took a look at the, at the access road to bring it up to public standards. We'd probably need a resurfacing on it. We'd have to put a curb along the west line, made some drainage and some, some other signage there, too. I thought at the time that the owners, Joe Roy and Tim Fisher, would be happy to dedicate that as a public road, so they wouldn't have a maintenance responsibility of it, but I talked to them a couple of times this week, and there's several unknowns for them in that, and they're not entirely comfortable with making that dedication. So, essentially, they said they're, they're not really interested in dedicating that as a public street, that they'd rather keep it theirs and keep the maintenance on it. They might move their no truck signs up to its entrance and, you know, let their deliveries know that it's okay, but the trucks, their main issue is trucks going to Casey's just as customers, come in the western access drive and go through their parking lot to park over here, and it's tearing up their entrance or their, their parking lot. So, anyway, when we talked in October, I thought they'd be happy to turn that over to the city. Turns out they're not. They'd rather hold on to it as a private drive, so. That being the case, I didn't think we had any strong feeling that that could be a public drive. We wanted to push that issue in any way. So, I think my recommendation now would be, let's don't do the addendum, we'll just design the project as we had originally contemplated it. Provide that directional signage, that's, you know, the best directional signage you can, and, and go on. So, unless anybody has any questions about that, I, I don't think we've taken any action on this.
I think that's the best course, right? If it's not gonna be a public street, we certainly don't wanna spend, spend money on it. I can understand their reservations, you know, during that, so, yeah, improve the signage so that people know how to get there and
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm good with that. No, no, no reason to spend money on, on the private side that isn't gonna benefit us in some way, so I'm good with it. No action.
Yeah.
Uh, all right. The next item, consider agreement with DVP LLC for 83rd Street sidewalk project funding. I'm gonna leave the meeting now. I did the, actually, I did the design on that sidewalk. I also, after switching jobs, did a bid, they're constructive, so. My name's all over this thing, so I'm just gonna
They got you coming in going, Mayor.
Looks like you're in charge of this one, Hannah.
Yes, it is. Yeah. So, by way of background, Don Carr and Adlons really was all of Arbor Ridge. And it was developed initially in 90 acres, kind of off of 83rd Street that, that was put in in the early 2000s. He, he since bought it, and he put in the second phase, which added Laramie Street as an entrance to 83rd Street. And he also bought the townhome portion that, that affronts along 83rd Street by Valley Springs Drive. So, if you look at this map that I've shown, the sidewalk we're talking about is shown in red here, or red and green along 83rd Street. The green portions were shown as part of those development approvals for the Arbor Ridge single-family subdivision and for the townhome subdivision part. So, Mr. Carr is responsible for putting the sidewalk, the green sections of sidewalk in. The, the original intent was to, when, when Valley Springs, and in the staff report, I apologize, I've mixed Valley Springs and Hillside Village. I interchanged those two throughout the staff report. If you look, if you notice, land a notice, Brad. It's Valley Springs. The, the assisted living facility, when they went in, in the 2000s, they were required to put this sidewalk in along 83rd Street. But it's put in up on top. There's a, 83rd Street has a cut slope here, that's about 15 feet higher than the road, and it's put in on top of that slope. And there's no way to connect these new sections of sidewalk with that one, and still need the ADA slope requirements for the sidewalk. It's no good way to do it. So, talked with Don about this several times, and, and CFS drew up an alternative design, which I put in your packet, for the sidewalk to run along 83rd Street. And this, the troublesome section here is in red, and it, it will involve a little bit of retaining wall. We'll have to route that sidewalk pretty near the edge of 83rd Street, but there will be a curve there. Sidewalk's a little wider there, but the retaining wall, and walking it, it feels, it doesn't feel like you're too close to traffic. You know, even though the sidewalk's there, walked several times, big trucks going by, it feels okay, which was my concern. At any rate, we didn't make it appropriate and, and to, to require Mr. Carr to pay for this red section. So, the agreement you have on your agenda tonight basically is one where we reimburse him for the cost of the red section of sidewalk, and, and he'll construct it when he builds the third phase, hopefully get started, maybe even yet this year, but early next year. So, we did take bids, we got three bids for, just, or Mr. Carr did, got three bids for, for the sidewalk. The low bidder is bedrock concrete, and the total amount of that is 76,500. So, in this table on the second page of the staff report, I've broken out the city responsibility from Mr. Carr's responsibility on that. So, our part of that's 47,700. Even though it's about a little under half of the project, the retaining wall adds to our, our portion of the cost, so it's not a half. So, those unit costs are worked into our part of the, of the project. So, 47,709 would be our share. And so, Patrick prepared an agreement, and I put the sidewalk detail plans in the staff report, if you're interested in, and look at those, we can, we can talk about those. Also, the bids, the three bids are attached in this exists in staff report. And then Patrick prepared an agreement with Don Carr, essentially that he goes and builds the thing, and we reimburse for the 47. So, really, that's what we're asking for council's approval on tonight, is for the mayor to sign that agreement on behalf of the council. And then the funding would come just from the general fund, from the contingency allocation of the general fund, which will, will reduce our fund balance at the end of the year, but I think I've shared with you before that, you know, the, the general fund is very healthy, we do have room in, in fund balance. So, I'll stop there for answering any questions you might have.
All right. Danny, do you have any questions or comments on this?
No, I'm good. Lori, thank you.
Yes.
Um, I just thought if, on the motion approved, may make sense to have city administrator sign off on the agreement instead of the mayor.
Did you guys hear that? Danny, did you hear what Patrick was saying?
Yeah, I, I think, I agree with that.
Okay. Kevin?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions on it and agree with the given city administrator permission. I'm just curious, on the, on the eastern end, then, Mike, what is the status of the sidewalks within the subdivision? Are those, so, so this will tie into existing sidewalks or to be built sidewalks?
Yeah, it will, it will.
Okay.
We were, yeah, we, we revised some code sections related to when sidewalks are constructed. Essentially, sidewalks will be constructed when the homes are built, that's each home itself. So, yeah, it'll connect to sidewalks interior to the Arbor Ridge subdivision.
No, I, I think that's great. I'm happy we're getting a stretch of sidewalk. It's really an extension, extension of the trail system that we built under the CDVG money, I believe, so this is, this is great.
Yeah.
As soon as what the Arbor Ridge third part is, is the other sidewalk sets in that bid. Or on the bedrock bid, there's more sidewalk on there.
Yeah.
That's probably
The third, the third phase, that's the subject sound that's Don's gonna build next, next spring.
So, that's on a different bid. So, the other part's probably already been done, as it goes. Okay.
It is. They'll build, they'll build this at the same time, but we have it separated because we're gonna be involved.
Rob, any questions?
So, time to the existing sidewalk is more of a grade slope issue?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the cost of it, it's just incapable of happening, or the cost of it's more than the cost of paying a whole other sidewalk?
Yeah, they're just, there's not, what we, what we have to do is put switchbacks and retaining walls in, in the side to get it up to the grade of, of the existing one. We didn't do a detailed cost analysis on that, but we thought, from a practical standpoint, it just, it doesn't make a lot of sense. You know, the sidewalk could go on and switch back, back and forth to get up to, get up to that section. I, I can't say that it would cost $76,000 to do that, but just wouldn't be as functional or usable or desirable.
And, you know, going back to the time when the Valley Springs homes were, were put in there, it was, you know, they were building their chunk of sidewalk in the place that made sense, which was up on the hill, because getting from there down to the road was gonna, was problematic. So, it's probably just poor, or really not thinking through a longer, longer picture at the time that that got built. I assume you're not gonna demo that, or are you gonna demo the existing piece of sidewalk?
No, we don't have any plans to do that.
Okay, so it'll just kind of be a hunk of sidewalk to nowhere, but, you know, somebody could stroll back and forth along it, I guess, so. Yeah, just not, not a lot of foresight, but solving the, the requirements that were in place at the time. There's no, Lori, is there any other questions or anything, or are you ready for motion?
Yeah, does anybody else have any? I don't really have any questions. I think I'm good with it. And so, you know, my only one comment is, is that you can tell that ex-engineer wrote this bid, how lengthy is compared to all the other two bids that were on? Looking at all those notes and disqualifications and exclusions, the other ones are like a little
Napkins.
Little napkin scratch there.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so I'm hoping that somebody would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign the agreement with DVP LLC to reimburse certain portions of the construction of sidewalk along 83rd Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Murdock.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Lane.
Yes.
Hannah Michael.
Yes.
Thank you. Council, the motion carried.
All right, item C, consider bids for stage shade trees at River Fest Park.
Yes, Council, you'll remember when Doug Peggert came and gave his presentation on the shade structure, we indicated desire to move forward tree planting. Zoom down here to his, his site plan that shows the, that's shown on the screen here. It shows the shade patterns here of the stage and the stage shade structure. And you'll remember kind of the shade plan, if you wanna call it that, is reliant on some shades, trees to be planted just off to the west of the stage here. Also, some trees to be planted kind of parallel with the, with the walk promenade later on. But we wanted to move forward to get these six trees bid and placed as soon as possible to get them started growing. So, I had Doug put together this two-page little specification for the type of size of tree we need. These are, these are trees that have to be relocated with this tree spade, a 90-inch tree spade. We reached out to six different landscape companies in the area. We could only get two bids. One was from Arbor Masters here in town, and the other one was from Lawrence Landscape. The bid from Lawrence Landscape's quite a bit better. It is cheaper in, in price, $1,200 a tree. And the bid from Arbor Master excluded the one-year warranty. So, we're recommending to go ahead and proceed with Lawrence Landscape for six trees, $1,200, a total of $7,200. Above my spending story, so I need council approval to accept that proposal.
Questions for Mike? Motion to accept the bid?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept the bid.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Not roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Hannah Michael. Where'd he go?
Where'd he go?
Let's Kevin.
We lost him, I didn't.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
And where did you go, Kevin?
I didn't notice him dropping off. Well, I was on my screen, Danny suddenly came.
Sorry about that all, somehow I think I hit something wrong.
Did you hear enough of the of the tree discussion to be prepared to vote on a motion to approve the bid from Lawrence Landscape?
Yeah, I think when I was trying to unmute, I delete, I exited the meeting, so I approve, I.
So you probably have something to, yeah, a question, commentary on the?
No, he was gonna.
He was gonna unmute his vote.
I was going to, I was going to unmute to get ready to vote and left the meeting.
So did you get his vote recorded?
No laughing, Rob.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, everyone accounted for, motion carried, mayor.
Okay, first glitch in a vote, that's.
Yeah. We don't need any more vote glitches around here.
All right. Item D, consider options for eighty second street sidewalk project.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gabel. Got to the point where we've got preliminary design act for sidewalk that the council approved for twenty twenty community development block grant project, which is a sidewalk along eighty second street from Delaware to Ottawa Street. So hire PC to do this analysis, it gives us a better indication of where should sidewalk go. There were some advantages or least comparative advantages walking the street and looking at where it could go. On the north side, there'll be less retaining walls, but there will be more access to our homes to cross. And also, it's a small negative is on Delaware Street, the existing sidewalk is actually on the south side, so there would need to be a street crossing to match up with the existing sidewalk is on that slide right there, so they'd have to cross from the south side to the north side. We put the extension on the north side of eighty second street. The south side retaining wall costs are fairly significant as we previously discussed with the sidewalk on eighty third street for Don Carr's development. They really do make up the difference in the cost between the hundred sixty six thousand and two hundred forty three thousand. And there's also a few drives on that south side that would need some significant reconstruction to if the sidewalks placed right in front of the curb or the drive would have to be built farther up throughout those homeowners to have a decent slope to their garages. Also, on the south side, the sidewalk is held right on the curb line and that's not necessarily bad thing, but typically we have our sidewalks a few feet off the edge of the curb. So those are really the differences in sort of design itself, as you can also see the the north side winds around a little bit to match some of the grades and snake around some of the utilities at the cowpools. There's also a few manholes and some things like that that are on the north side, they're able to get around those. And really didn't significantly impact the cost by having to add that little bit of stretch of concrete and also some additional grade that would be required. As you can see, there's a fair difference in cost between the north and the south side of the project, and certainly the unit makes a decision fairly easy. The other point, though, is the fact that a community development block grant is about seventy seven thousand dollars, so we would make up an either alternative decent amount of money to proceed with either project, about ninety thousand for the north side and then about hundred thirty three thousand approximately. These are preliminary numbers, so they kind of been just engineers' experience in doing similar type projects. At this time, we have not done our public engagement process, want to bring it to the council to see if you want to go to that next step. And are still committed to doing this project, going to be significantly above. A lot of times we try to match the CDBG project, and we're certainly gonna go over that, and then we have to additional cost or consulting fees are on top of this one sixty six that's in the bid, so. If we are not gonna proceed, this would be the time to say we're gonna do this project. Or if you want to proceed, we will be in my work on publicly involvement process and have meetings with all the majors. Show that this information and our consultants can also explain how the sidewalk is placed and some of the more detailed reasons where it is, it's in cost. So with that, I'd just like to get your thoughts on, A, do we proceed and and then allow to set to the process of engagement for our citizens, the community assistance, kind of preference to maybe pushing back and saying we want it on the on the south side of the street, which could also then put some pressure on the reconsider based upon the public input side of things versus costs. With that, I'll state any questions you all may have.
Questions from council, Lori, do you have anything? Danny, want to move on and come back to?
Well, no, it's all right, what kind of what did we originally think this project dollar wise?
Yeah, so really, I think in the CIP, we we tagged this at about hundred and twenty, hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand. So it's significantly above that. The difference to be made up will be made up in the CIP. And so, you know, our CIP is a five-year plan, and we have bonds, you know, scheduled for next year and maybe the year after that. Changing priorities, we're gonna shift that around, you know, with the park reference that didn't pass. We have bonding capacity now, but we have parts projects to consider that that makes too. So when we update our CIP at the first of this year, it'll be time to make those adjustments. You know, probably the shortest answer I can give is, you know, if this, doing this might mean some, for someone, a smaller project might get bumped back or it might be the bond issue just a little bit. Either way, it's not. So I would say there's cash available to do this, you know, this year even, I mean, I don't think it's gonna happen this year, you know, the money will be spent next year. But, you know, the CIP will 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 need to adjust its CIP to account for this.
And consulting fees, what are you looking at on top of what?
Well, the biggest part of the fee that needs to be added is a more detailed survey specifically finding exactly where all the utilities utilities are and their gaps and things like that, so there there's another eighteen thousand dollars on top of consulting fee for the design.
Which we want, what paid that fee?
Yeah, is that paid, do you remember what that was?
I really don't know.
Yeah, I was thinking about twenty five grand, yeah, so we had another eight or ten on top of the twenty five. So it might be thirty that I'm looking at.
And then that's on top of?
I thought it was.
Yeah, it's one sixty six, so.
Two hundred.
But I guess one thing I would point out is, you know, we do our projects and a lot of our community development projects, sidewalk projects, we pay really close attention to those. This is a stretch that hasn't been built, and there's a reason why is because it's expensive and there's a lot of things that are in the way. So when you see all the sidewalks that have been built in Old Posato, Old Town Posato, this is a fairly important piece that's missing, but the reason it's missing is because it's right on the backside of the Old Town version, it's a steeper grade, it's just.
This piece becomes key when we have Ottawa Street upgraded and a good connection to River Fest Park. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to kick the can down the road, but it's it would be possible to tag this project along to a bigger one like the Ottawa Street project, tie the when you and then when you're working in in bigger projects, bigger quantities, it's gonna it's not gonna seem as big of a hit, but and and you get typically more competitive pricing than you would if it was just a standalone, a smaller standalone project, but. I mean, until we get that connection to River Fest Park, yes, it would be nice to have it there, but you know, it just really serves the folks that live along there that can walk back and forth because there's nowhere, you know, they, I guess they can go one way, it takes them to Miller Park and back, but it doesn't. It doesn't provide that part-to-part connectivity that we're was kind of envisioned when we set this project up.
Yeah, I think that's what we might have brought it up there, because that's, I think, what council agreed to do this project, because it was the connection between Miller and River Fest Park, that's why we ultimately put that forward for the community development block grant.
Does it have a positive effect, though, ever putting that other project to apply for a grant that now it would be connecting something that's there?
Yeah, maybe, you know.
I mean, you know, it's a positive thing when you're going forward later.
Yeah, some of the mark stuff is is kind of, some of the scoring made parts of the mark applications have that connectivity element in it. We tried to get market money, we tried to get market money for everything.
I think probably our most likely, if as long as the when, as long as Kate continues that program, is that match fund, you know?
Yeah, we did give the five hundred thousand for Ottawa Street.
Right.
Announced this fall, so. The thing I would say about waiting, though, is the CDBG money.
Goes away, right, we we forfeit the seventy thousand dollars.
Seventy seventy six, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And was the project that we're looking at? Are we on a project, did on one of these roads that connect to this? Was that sidewalks or something else that you were looking for?
Oh, yeah, oh, the, see, the twenty twenty one, and that was kind of straight around the CDBGs, we'll be doing twenty, CDBG twenty one, and then the twenty one project will get even built probably late.
But isn't that one of these roads also?
Yeah, it's part of the.
Was it Shawnee or was it?
I believe it was, I thought it was, it was Wia Street.
We are.
It's Wia, and we're gonna do a sidewalk.
Yeah. Doesn't make near as much.
If we don't have this, then we have to miss.
We need to get a hundred thousand dollars for that, which is the max if you can. So the county, county level makes those decisions. Totally funded hard, as much as we could get for the Wia Street project.
Well, I'm still in favor of the project, I think it's a lot of sidewalk. And I understand it's expensive because of everything going with it, but I mean, if you think it's better to wait and try to take it on to something else, you know, I I get that totally, but I also hate losing some money that we have to do, I don't know that you can change it and shrink it down or do anything different, if there's, you know, if there's anything that can be done that way.
Yeah, just to shave two blocks off of it, if you know, a little way, I mean, we could go to, you know.
Start with the one index.
Go to Peoria and then pick up that last block and we give Ottawa Street something.
Or let's get it to Wia, maybe we can get it to Wia Street, you know, to the next
So that it's working way next.
CDBG project, and then from with the Ottawa Street, bring the sidewalk back from Ottawa to connect.
That's probably the best thing.
And I don't like to see us stopping in the middle of a project that we've got money for, we've already put consulting out into.
Right.
You know, that seems like that's all gonna be going by the wayside, we, I mean, I know we can come back a couple of years, but I could still like to see us use what we can if the project could be shortened. But, you know, you know, like we say, start at Wia and work our way west with what we can do, makes it.
Maybe, maybe the thing to do is is design, decide which side of the road you want to go on, design the whole thing.
Right.
Then, you know, maybe in the design, you get an updated cost estimate, we could still make a decision, alternate bid for the last two blocks or something.
That's a good.
Maybe a couple of different bids on it.
Yeah, the thing I can't help but comment on is the the design for the retaining walls on the south side are expensive. I mean, that's an expensive design. I know, I'm not sure if the consultant would look at, I don't know why they didn't look at an integral sidewalk retaining wall that you thicken the base of the sidewalk and that serves as the footing, and then for the thirty inch height that they're listing right there, it's 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 adequate to retain that soil load, and right now with this design, we're building three foot below grade that's, you know, it just needed for this particular design, but it doesn't. It's an expensive solution.
So.
You cut that, I'm just quick numbers, you could cut that more than in half of their estimated wall cost for the south side by going to an integral sidewalk retaining wall.
So is that wall cost here is in the structural concrete?
Yeah, right, right.
Yeah, so you cut that in half, huh?
That should easily be in half, I think, so that that one's gonna be somewhere closer to two hundred, the two hundred thousand, yeah.
That brings them closer.
I mean, I just can't help, I would not, I wouldn't want to waste money on a thirty inch wall that had that design on it, that's that's to me is a wasteful approach to retain the soil.
Well, what are the feelings regardless of cost?
My preference is that we would try and continue it on the south side, I think that, I don't have any problem pulling it up to the street.
It's a straighter shot, you're not.
It's and it's the continuation, I, you get rid of that mid-block crossing. The north side, you have those fairly severe drops, you know, on on the streets and a couple of the driveways, and that's why they're they're pulled up pretty tight.
Well, there's retaining wall on the north side, too.
Right, to make that work. And I would much rather, I I just prefer a cut wall rather than a filled wall on the sidewalk, it's just. But I I would say they should look at some cost-saving options. And again, so the at the public meeting, if I guess if you find, I I guess that though, as long as we're doing it and we don't have to acquire easement or right of way, then we could still proceed, but if you have a major pushback from the neighbors on or on one side or the other, then that does help, I mean, if we can accomplish what we need going on either side, then if we can do it and keep more people happy, then that's usually the easier, the better, better choice, so.
I was gonna schedule a call there, consult tomorrow, I can bring up these points there. And then I guess what, there's you want to proceed with the public involvement process as well.
I think so, yeah, I don't.
Or really, before, yeah, I mean, let's show the public then both options.
Exactly, there's nothing, we we're not out any more money one way or the other, I I think that they they should have a chance to.
Rather than deciding now and barreling ahead.
Exactly, right, let's let's use the public involvement process to what it's to its greatest advantage for us. And we'll see what if we may not get any participation and then.
So we have to make the decision?
Right. But if someone has a strong opinion one way or another that lives in the area, they should have the opportunity to present.
I might have to do another film truck over there. I want to walk it.
We can go walk.
We could go walk it.
You'll have to walk in the street, but there's no sidewalk.
All right, so that's all the direction you need from us tonight?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor, could I kind of throw in one thing to?
Sorry, Kevin.
No, it's okay, just to to reinforce, I I agree with everything you're saying, I had the question on the structural wall as well, but my thought would be, yes, proceed with, definitely proceed with the public engagement, and I agree with with getting the design all completed at this point, but I would suggest that we see how much we can get done. Say, can we get the Delaware to Wia portion done with the CDBG money that we have, shrink it down, get some of it built now, use that money, and then package the rest of it into to the Ottawa, but I I don't know why we would let that expire or not, go ahead and try to get a couple of blocks of it built, and and I would say on the east side, because then you can you can tie it together with Ottawa improvements on the west side, just my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin, I'm sorry, I forgot to pull you and Danny, bring in. All right, are we ready to talk about dump truck?
I'm ready to talk about a dump truck.
All right, so we'll go on to item B, consider authorizing twenty twenty one dump truck purchase.
Yes, council, this is a familiar discussion to you, although we usually have had this discussion after the first of the year. These dump trucks, seems like they they've got longer and longer lead times every time we order one, it takes more months to get it built in the factory and in at the dealer. And then it has to go to the separate equipment supplier to put the accessories on, so what we wanted to do is get approval, council approval to actually select the the equipment, the vendor, so that we can get them started on the manufacturing before the first of the year, so this is actually for twenty twenty one money. This is actually for twenty twenty-one money, uh, which won't be spent until twenty twenty-one, but we wanna get the purchase order approved. So that the, so we don't have to, we're not having to wait until August to get our dump truck hopefully given in March or so. So the twenty twenty-one vehicle equipment budget, um, I, I've listed, the, the two new acquisitions. Are the purchase of the, the dump truck for the street department and there's a vacuum unit in the water department. Those are the only two new purchases in twenty twenty-five. The rest of the equipment replacement budget is either lease purchase payments or repayments to the electric reserve or, or, uh, equipment we've already got. And I've outlined that in the spreadsheet there on page one and two of the staff report. Um, so you can see those totals now. Those are in the departmental budgets as trans, either transfers to the electric reserve or lease purchase payment. The, um, the unit that we wanna purchase now is a Peterbilt, um, and we, we, we've got the, the price proposal is, is attached. And again, like we've done in the past, these are cooperative bid purchases through the Mid-America Regional Council Public Purchasing Program. So we've, uh, verified that those discounts have been provided to us. The total purchase of the truck and the components is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, for rolling stock, including dump trucks and pickup trucks, um, we're buying them outright with, with, uh, borrowing from our electric reserve fund. So that requires an ordinance to be passed by a two-thirds majority, and we've prepared that ordinance, um, for your consideration. It's attached as, as Exhibit B. The terms of that, um, payback will be four years, so the equipment replacement program. Assumes five-year paybacks, but we always budget the first year payback in the first year. So essentially, we just take that off the principal. So we budgeted thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars in twenty twenty-one for this purchase. We take that off the principal, so what we're financing is two hundred and two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. For four years at an interest rate of two point seven five percent. Uh, that equates the annual payments of forty-three thousand eight twenty-nine. Which those annual payments will be rolled into the program, included in this spreadsheet moving forward. As just as part of the, as that budgeted expense each year. So if you're comfortable moving forward with that, um, we'd ask you to pass the ordinance in Exhibit B and authorize me. To accept the proposals from Peterbilt in the amount of one oh nine, five thirteen, and from American Equipment Company in the amount of one twenty-nine, seven seventy-three.
Any questions for Mike on the truck? Or the ordinance? So, have they purchased at the time of the order or they purchased at the time of delivery as far as the finances where it would be?
The mayor. Yeah, so what the, what the vendor, both vendors require of us is a purchase order to make, uh, to make the, the order from the factory. And they build it and we don't, we don't know anything else to live.
Okay, so the money would be in twenty twenty-one then?
Yeah, we won't spend the dime until twenty-one, and then both vendors are very, are aware of that. And really, the American Equipment, that won't happen until next year.
Yeah.
We just need to get the factory, because with COVID now, it's even more big. Yeah, so we need, yeah, that's really what we need, why we're doing it, this order.
The ordinance number, if you choose to approve it, is two five zero one.
Danny, any questions or?
Oh, Mayor, thank you.
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Alright, Lori?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we. Pass the ordinance two five zero one and authorize, authorizing the city administrator to accept a proposal from Peterbilt in the amount of one hundred and nine. Thousand, five hundred and thirteen and from American Equipment Company in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-three.
Second, alright, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing that, we'll, we'll call please.
Lane?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. The motion carries.
Okay. Item F, consider AV equipment upgrades for city council chambers and conference room.
Uh, yeah, Council, Laura cares that stuff. I think we discussed this particular effort at a couple of meetings in the past. I had our vendor that installed the equipment a couple of years ago come out and priced this out for me. They did provide the proposal, it's attached to your, um, to your packets. In short, what it will do is integrate. The, the main camera in this room so that I can feed it out to our video conferencing system. So what we have to do now is, there's a camera that's, this little webcam that's taped to the front of the TV up here. It gives the room view. Um, so instead of that, that'd be integrated with the main camera that does the YouTube video. It'll also integrate your microphones at your places. To go through and be, um, be able to be used in the video conference too, cause right now our microphones are just this room light here. And when someone's standing podium and not talking very loudly, sometimes parts of those on the video conference will hear that. So we'll be able to get rid of this mic, get rid of the webcam and just speak through the microphones with the one and that'll all work together. In addition to that, we're gonna put a TV monitor and video conferencing equipment back here in the, in the, in the conference room, the glass table conference room. Um, the total there is, what is it, seven, seven thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. This has been pre-approved by the county as a per-approved CARES expenditure. And we have, um, confirmed with our vendor, it does a statewide contract where it's a statewide competitive bid, and they, they, they approved to us with the discounts. Uh, that provided through the state are being offered to us too, so that takes care of the competitive bid issue, even though I'm not sure with a kind of sole source vendor that we have this. System that we really be able to competitively bid that in. But, um, asking for your approval for that expenditure with expenses reimbursed by CARES.
Questions for Mike? I think it's a needed, uh. Addition, um, so.
Accept the pricing proposals from CCS for the AV upgrades at City Hall in the amount of seven thousand, twenty-one, twenty. With expenses being reimbursed by the CARES Act funding.
I will second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second, and a second. Uh, any discussion of the motion? We'll call please.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, no executive session tonight, I'm assuming? Nope, that was a good assumption. Advisory reports, Mike carry on.
Yeah, two quick things. Um, we talked about shade trees at, at Miller Park. Doug Piggott, if you remember last time, he gave, he gave a presentation, uh, got some feedback from you, talked about coming up with a. Final design based on that feedback. Uh, he was able to provide that to us. I've got it shown up here. Um, and we'll bring it back to you at the next council meeting, but this is, this is the structure. That is proposed fifty by fifty steel with a sloped, a solid roof. Um, so this is based on the feedback last time. The. I think one of the things he talked about last time was a consideration for the acoustical performance of the shade structure. So that this, the roof sloping all the way from back out to the front will help with that. Some of the other options he showed was just kind of an enclosed sort of. More of a picnic shelter type thing that he realized wasn't gonna work with acoustics. So this solves that problem. And also this mesh, um, in here would, would help with the acoustics and provides, uh, for space for, for banners. He's showing the, the shade trees there. Just wanted to show that to you. We'll, um, we'll have some updated costing, uh, for you. Would, I don't know if that will come back or not, but we'll, we'll prevent that before we send it out to bid. And we'll, we'll just kind of get a final thumbs up on, on the concept and move forward with that, so.
So, thank you. Um, do we, so now, talking about bids. Uh, before we build it, do we wanna engage in a capital campaign? Do we wanna, I mean, I think before we build it, I, I wanted to have a plan and a good picture, but. I think before we decide to spend city funds, I wanna make sure that there's not a community partner that doesn't wanna.
Yeah.
Invest in it. And I, I don't know, I guess I would rather do that before we did it than after. Uh, to me, it would seem to make sense.
So we might need to put together, and maybe this is something. We have to get somebody to do, or maybe just what you can do is some kind of a marketing package for what.
Yeah, right.
The mayor's talking about, that we have, you know, um, you know, we have a kind of a general idea of the cost at least, we know what we'd be. Shooting for, and, um, this is definitely worth the money to go into that five oh one C three account that we have, um, so definitely something that could be. You know, a tax write-off for anybody who does contribute anywhere from small, you know, dollars to bigger dollars that would wanna, you know, be involved in it. But I think definitely the opportunity for naming rights for somebody who would give a huge proportion of that money. In some way, having naming rights, um, on it. Um, I don't, I'm not opposed to that. People may not like that, but I'm engaged.
Rob, what are your feelings?
I'm good with that. Nothing left to go on.
Great. Danny? Thank you.
Um, yeah, I, I, I feel the same way with you, Mayor, that we need to go ahead and reach out.
Okay, Kevin, any thoughts?
No, I totally agree, and, you know, hopefully one of the big, maybe one of the big industries in town would love to put their name on it. I think it's great. I think we need to do it.
Alright, here we go.
Okay, um, yeah, like I said, we'll, we'll, we'll bring back with some costs, final costs and, um.
Yeah, I like, I like the design. I think it's.
Yeah, I, the mesh like even, yeah, seems like it would have had a little bit of shade.
Shade, shade, right?
Um, yeah, very much what I envisioned from, we first started talking about it before we straight-wired.
Okay.
Okay.
What else you got, Mike?
We'll do that. Um, the other thing, just, just a heads up, I think we've mentioned it before, but we are very likely gonna need a budget amendment this year. Um, and, um, I think. If it's possible, you know, the, the main reason what is for the refuse account, um, because refuse is its own kind of utility. And it's just money in, money out at the honey creek mostly, but we've had so many new, uh, customers that we've got a lot more revenue and a lot more money going in. So we don't need a budget amendment for more revenue coming in, but it looks like we're gonna exceed the amount, but.
Other have to spend.
Yeah, so we're likely gonna need a budget amendment for that. Uh, there's possibility that we'll need one also for the general fund because of the, largely because of the CARES Act money. It's two hundred thousand dollars that we didn't, you know, we didn't plan on spending and we'll, it's coming in again, but it might exceed, it might exceed the authority going out. So just a reminder, you know, we have that contingency allocation of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we're gonna spend quite a bit of that this year. Um, just to, just a reminder, we decided we're gonna spend two hundred and thirty thousand of that for the River Fest back rooms, so that's done. There was a hundred thousand dollars in a payment to RT Fiber that was supposed to happen in two thousand nineteen, but because of all the delays there, it didn't happen until this year. There's a storm sewer project. We had a storm sewer collapse on ninety, on Ninety-Fifth Street, just east of Lexington. That was about sixty thousand dollars. We put an electrical panel downtown at the corner of Shoney and, and A, Third Street. That is twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the trees we just authorized tonight, seventy-two hundred bucks. Uh, the sidewalk for about sprains, forty-seven thousand dollars, and then the CARES Act, two hundred and thirteen thousand. About six hundred and seventy thousand of the seven hundred and fifty, um, contingency allocation we'll be spending. Um, so. Just a reminder of that, and I, yeah, I don't know that we'll need one for the general, we'll be going through the process. I'm probably shooting for the first meeting in December. Doesn't require a public here, so we'll, we'll gear up for it. So I don't want you to be surprised. Or worried, and there's no problem. All this stuff was expected and, and, you know, projected and the general fund balance will go down this year. That was planned. By design, um, but just a heads up on that.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
That was all.
Alright, very good. Thank you. Patrick?
Nothing for me.
Alright. Brad?
Oh, I, I actually do have something. Give you all an update on our, on our security hall, our City Hall security project. I guess the first thing is a money issue. If you notice where the doorway to Patrick's office is, it's, she rocks, get cut out. We found out that that's actually a low-gear wall. There's actually three rows. Clay tile brick back to back to back, and that was not accounted for in the bid package at the process. So we asked, uh, our architect to also hire this, run it as structural engineer, gets priced, and it was thirteen thousand, four hundred dollars to put in. Three headers, basically. They would tear one course out, put in the header, tear on another course, put in the header, and then the third one, and then proceed with the doorway. We did approve a project with ten percent contingency, but the contingency doesn't cover the additional funds, so we want to bring attention, lease get out, not enhance to proceed. We did think about, there's a couple of other options that we could do that'd be less expensive. Easiest would be to just. Put a carburetor on Patrick's current door and then he would have to come in and out through the main entrance, which didn't seem very feasible. Cause it defeats the purpose of wanting to build the security project to get city staff behind the secure entrance. The other thought was to, or building official office is to put a small vest to be over there and cut a door. The Patrick's office from that way, that sort of cobbles up where Walter, Cameron and Steve aren't, meaning they have another person in there, kind of. Limits that possibility as well, so we're kind of back to spending money. I guess that would be our recommendation to my master, not. Moving forward with it, because that's the seat which you authorized us to spend, but it, I think the project still makes sense to proceed with the door as it's located.
Okay.
So kind of want to hear your thoughts on, or at least you approve and move forward, or correct us to do one of those other options.
Well, we can't leave it with that brick wall.
That will get repaired. That will go away, one way.
I suppose there's not any other office space either. That would be a better option for him to be in, but.
I, I don't, I guess you never really looked at that, but that spot is, I mean, it, it needs to be an office of some sort at some point, so. To get that office, that location, whether or not.
Yeah, you know.
Remains there or where, if, where we have other people that might be there.
Well, when we were working through that max, the city hall max plan, you're right, we're kind of, you know, seeing, kind of getting the plan, and my number one rule was just make sure the attorney stays out. I want Patrick to be happy, so, um, he's done a lot of work on the floors in there. That's, that's his.
It's his, it's his home, but.
Yeah, and I, I would agree, you know, the other options for the door entrance, just. And, you know, the, the thirteen thousand, so the, the contingency is about eleven, so the whole project was about a hundred and nine thousand. So the contingency was ten thousand, nine hundred, so this exceeds the contingent, and it exceeds my authority anyway, so it, it would, it would hurt.
If we, if we don't run into any other unexpected, then we'll be a couple thousand dollars over.
Yeah.
What we already authorized.
Right, right.
And at this point, you know, you know what it is, there aren't any sort of unknowns like this when we're opening something up that we don't know what's back there. We're just talking about now. Putting in the doors, secure, secure transaction windows and then all this security electronics. There isn't gonna be any. Famous last words, there won't be any initial.
There are.
So at this point, those runs only about two or three thousand.
Yeah, yeah, about, about thirty, thirty thousand, thirty two.
I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Kevin?
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with it.
Alright, Danny?
Same, I'm good, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I guess a couple of other points is we're back order on the secure transaction windows by now. Now, we'll get that in a couple of weeks ago, so now it's probably six weeks. So the construction process, they're, I mean, they're by and large done with a lot of their. Items, so we're just waiting on the doors, which are, those are back for four weeks and secure transaction with the backward, so.
Well, thank goodness this was not COVID money then, right? We wouldn't.
Yeah, we'd be out of luck.
Our time hit the end of the year.
Yeah.
So Mike, do you need a motion for the spending on that, or does?
Uh, you know, yeah, it might be, it might be best.
Do we have a formal change order to?
We, we do. We do have a lot of it.
Okay. If so, what spending amount?
Let me see if I can I know this is this is awkward during this during the meeting.
He can probably bring it back in the next meeting.
Well
Eight weeks, right?
You want to be able to get them to start and build.
Yeah. It's 13,5. I mean, I know it was 13,4. Yeah, but yeah, just, just
So a motion to approve the change order with the security upgrades at City Hall for the administrator in the amount of $13,500.
That'll work, yeah.
I'll second that.
More or less.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion or questions regarding the motion? Not roll call, please.
Lane?
Yes.
Hunter Michael?
Yes.
Murdoch?
Yes.
Daniels?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried.
Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Nothing else, Mayor, thank you.
City clerk, anything to report tonight?
Just to remind you about the NIMs training that I sent out to you, so at your leisure.
Leisure, that's like a long hours of training.
It's not bad. We've done it. It's good. You can do it.
Well, there's no cost to that, is there?
No.
You just click and take the
Right, yeah. There's no cost to it. Your tax dollars have paid for that, but so when you do get those certificates, if you would just send me a copy of one so I can put it in our file and in case of. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I start it and stop it? Start it or do you want to do it all at once?
When I took it, you could stop and start. It would hold it for you, but I don't know. I know the system's been upgraded several times, so
Someone's going back and should pick up where you left off.
I'm not sure.
Three and a half hours.
Yeah.
That's what happens there.
They say that first someone as smart as you or Do a Word service in the PDF or else you miss this.
When I did it, I read through everything first. Kevin Ritter helped me with it, gave me some pointers on it. So I read through everything and then went back and took the test, which made it easier for me. But everybody has their own way of how they learn and study in school. Well, I have
All right, thank you, Lana. Council comments. Danny, you're on my right-hand side. You got anything tonight?
No, I'm good, Mayor. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Kevin?
Yeah, I just want to call out Brad for being diligent about city ISOs. He kept on the Arcadia Estates folks to get their silt fence taken down, which had been falling apart in the right of way after having been installed quite some time ago. So, Mike, you probably had a little bit of, probably gave him a little bit of backing it, but thank you, Brad, for getting that taken care of.
Thank you.
Lori?
I don't have a big thing, thank you, Mayor.
Rob?
Two things. Mike, did we, did we, are we putting any CARES Act reimbursement for salaries?
Yeah, yeah.
Now that they started approving that and said that's okay?
They did, yeah. That came out, I think, last week or the week, just the week before. They gave us guidance on what we could, is it what happened?
I think last week. Yeah, it was last week, I was in and out today, but they approved some for the first time.
Yeah, yeah. So guidance on that, it looks like we're going to be able to recoup maybe about $50,000 worth of COVID off type of furlough time when we had, when we had people remain home because of the pandemic. Bonnie's working on that. It does require quite a bit of accounting, payroll accounting, but
Is that above, is that above beyond the $200?
Yeah, that'd be above. Yeah, that'd be pretty on that. So, yeah, we're looking in. Yeah, I can't, I can't say for sure exactly how much, but it's going to, it'll be, you know, in the five figures. That'll be good.
And any update on digs? So this odd and stuff on digs fireworks?
Oh, what is the latest?
Well, they have decided ticketed. And they are, I don't know which court date they're going to be appearing at, but Walter did get some, got a phone call from their lawyer and asked for the specifics of the ordinance, the ordinance of the city code. Provided that information, so somewhere we got their attention, but
We're no longer working with them. We're ticketing them, and the judge is going to be working with them, or hopefully finding them. Yeah, so the court date's coming up, but
Yeah, I don't know exactly. I can find out. But they've been notified they're, they're going to court.
Any concern?
We'll find out the details when we, when we take it to them, when the court date is, we'll be there.
That's important. That's important for me.
Yes.
All right, I have a couple things. First of all, a little update. I hosted out at the barn, Kilcreak Barn last night. I hosted the council of Wyndock, Johnson Wyndock County Council Mayors. And I wanted to thank Shelby at Great American Bank. She provided some sanitizer for me to have at everybody's spot. Thank you, Shelby, if you want to watch that on the video tomorrow. I need to thank the barn folks. They donated the space for me to hold the meeting. And everybody likes that venue for that. They like coming to, coming to DeSoto, to the barn. It worked out to great spot for that kind of stuff. I think Whitney, she overrode me. She brought sweet tea, and I want to let Whitney know she made the right call. The sweet tea was a hit. The plain tea that I requested, I was the only one that drank. But that was a good meeting. I don't know that we talked about anything, that we accomplished anything in particular, but those are always good to get together. The one other item I wanted to take care of tonight is, at the end of this year, Bob Garrett's term on the fire board will be expiring. And Bob has requested, expressed an interest in continuing his service, and I would support that. And so I would ask for the council to approve my appointment of Bob Garrett to another term on the fire board.
So moved it. Yeah, I definitely, he's done a great job, Mayor, and I think that's a great decision.
Okay, so Kevin made a motion. Can I get a second?
I second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Both, okay. I guess all I got tonight.
I have to make a motion on adjourned.
Second.
Aye, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting. See y'all.